Okay, and CM's ready? All righty. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood zoning board meeting of August 1st, 2023. This meeting is being recorded by Norwood Community Media as well as Google Meet. I'd ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices at this time. And the format for this evening, as any party wishing to offer comments or testify on matters before the board, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. The applicant or the representative of the applicant will address the board and present their proposal, provide evidence and testimony supporting the proposal. The board can ask questions during that proposal, after that proposal. And then we will ask if there's any elected or appointed officials to speak on this matter, and then ask if any other members of the public, either on go-to meeting or here in the audience. At the conclusion of that, the proponent, the applicant, will be given an opportunity to address any concerns that might have been brought up from the public testimony, and then the board will decide if we'll move forward with a vote and close the public hearing, or continue the public hearing, and take our deliberations. Anyone addressing any matters, please do so through the chair. And tonight's sitting is Paul Easey, Shannon Greenwell, Rachel Churchill, Al Poro, and Mike Sheen is the chairman. Okay, the first matter before us is a case that has been continued. Case 2302-973 University Avenue was continued from June 6th, 2023, and I believe we received a letter from the applicant that they wish to continue due to an illness and one of their members of their team.
Correct. So, they requested a continuance to your next meeting on September 12th.
Okay, so...
7:00 PM here at the Senior Center and also on Google Meet.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to continue this till September 12th, 2023, 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center.
So moved.
And also on go-to meet, moved by Shannon, second by Al. Al, on the continuance?
Yes.
Yes. Rachel?
Epstein.
Okay, thank you. Shannon?
Yes.
Yes. Paul?
Yes.
Yes. So that matter is continued. The next case is 23-09-241 Pleasant Street. This is continued also from June 6th, 2023. I believe the applicant is here. Please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Hearn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Hearn Jr. of Gelman and Cabral at 30 Walpole Street here in Norwood, representing 241 Pleasant Street LLC. The principal of that limited liability company, Edward Musto, is here also. We were before you back in May, and then early in June is continued to this evening, and the prior discussion included an expression of concerns about the proposed layout of the addition that Mr. Musto is seeking to add to the house at 241 Pleasant Street. You may recall, and for the benefit of those who weren't here before, that house at 241 Pleasant Street was built about 1817, and we are told by records of the town that it is the sole remaining house that has two brick sides. And one of the concerns that was expressed when we were before you was that the proposed addition would hide one of those sides wholly or partially, depending upon how we set it up. The... Since we were before you on the 6th and the matter was continued to this evening, we have submitted a revised plan for the proposed addition. We're not changing the elevations or the look of the proposed addition, really, but the plan that we filed with the board, and which hopefully you all have had the opportunity to look at, shows the proposed addition as being placed partly along the rear wall of the existing house, and it overlaps by about 12 feet, which satisfies the requirements of the building commissioner and normally under the building code for a structure to be, or in addition to be considered part of an existing structure, it needs to be 12 feet of common wall. So, Mr. Musto discussed this with Mr. Pelletier, the building commissioner, and he agreed that the proposed layout of the addition is consistent with his concerns and his understanding. He's not passing on the zoning issue, that's what you folks are dealing with, but in terms of how we're laying it out, he agrees that that would qualify under the building code as being part of the structure. So, one of the issues that we also discussed, you know, this is a variance we're dealing with. We need a variance because we don't have 15,000 square feet, and the exception that normally applies to allow additions to houses that existed prior to July 21st, 1927, which is when the advent of zoning in Norwood, single-family houses in certain neighborhoods can be added onto and converted to two-family houses, provided that the extension does not exceed 50% of, including any additions in the five years previous. This house actually was much larger. When Mr. Musto first acquired it, there was an old, an L on the house that got taken down. It really was in very bad shape. It was sitting on the ground without any real foundation. So, we're here looking for variance relief because in order to put an addition on the house that will increase the habitable space by more than 50%, in fact, roughly 100% increase, doubling, pretty much doubling the size of the house, we need variance relief. And so, what we were talking is parsing the statute in terms of the language, what is the justification and so forth. Now, the statute discusses, as one of the criteria, the existence of conditions relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land, or structures. Now, the way the, or structures is placed in that phrasing is a little bit odd because most of us cannot conceive of how a structure would have soil conditions or topography. There is a case, the Karis case, which was a Supreme Judicial Court case back in 1958, which is pretty much the only case that anybody can find that deals with this type of issue, where a variance was upheld. It was granted by the Board of Appeal of Cambridge and then upheld by the Supreme Judicial Court, when the variance was related not to soil conditions or topography, or shape of a lot, excuse me, but it related to the structure on the land. Now, the zoning statute has changed somewhat over the years, but Karis does, is still cited in the treatises on this as supporting the idea that you can have a variance related to unusual conditions involving a structure, as opposed to, say, soil conditions or shape of a lot. In this case, we have a house 206 years old now. This was like 205 when we started, but it's about 206 years old this year. It is unique. We're told in the records of the town that it is the only one of its kind with two brick gable ends. We heard previously from Ms. Howard of the Historical Commission about that point, and there are records submitted as part of the case. So, it's a unique situation. Now, the, that condition, that house doesn't really affect the zoning district generally in which the property is located. That's the second prong of the test. You know, you've got an unusual condition that is not generally found within the district. You can't say this house is generally found anywhere else in the district. We're told it can't be found anywhere else in the town, but that it is a, an unusual case, and the, that condition is that makes the structure unique, and it's the uniqueness of the structure that leads to the hardship. We've got an early 19th century house, and its layout and its size don't really lend itself to today's needs. It's been a house that's, as I said before, Mr. Musto had to take down prior. It just couldn't be saved. If he hadn't, we wouldn't be here arguing about the need for variance because he would have been able to fit within the 50%, but that happened some years ago. So, here we have, how can Mr. Musto preserve the structure, which some people want to see preserved because of its age, because of its uniqueness, but how do we do it in a way that makes sense, economic sense, allows him to upgrade the house by adding onto it? And this, to do so would reduce the financial hardship of otherwise having an old house. Can't make it any better, can't add onto it, and he's, he is, you know, stuck with the situation. What do you do? Do you knock it down, or do you replace it with something new? Wouldn't comply with zoning. Or can the board see its way to looking at the uniqueness of the house, at the historical value of the house, and allow an extension that would help to preserve the house? To do that would not, another prong of the variance test, to authorize that type of relief would not cause any detriment to the public good. It would serve the public good by making the preservation of the house more likely, and it wouldn't nullify or derogate from the intent of the bylaws. You know, the purposes of the bylaws include the encouragement, or to encourage, I'll quote exactly, "to encourage the most appropriate use of land through the town, and to increase the amenities of the town." This house, as a single or a two-family, is completely appropriate for, as a use of land. It's in a neighborhood of single-family and two-family houses, and preserving the house, preserving the historic house, would certainly be considered as an amenity for the town and for historical purposes. So, we asked the board to grant the relief. We think that, while it's an unusual case, looking at the Karis case, looking at the writings on that, that this is the situation, unusual as it is, where a variance can be granted because of the conditions of the structure, its uniqueness, the history of it, the hardship that flows from having to maintain an old house where financially it's not making a whole lot of sense to them, and to allow an addition that would also provide more housing, keeping with the concerns the town and the general Massachusetts area has, to provide housing for folks. So, we're happy to take any questions, Mr. Chairman, but thank you for your time and for listening.
Are there any questions from the board of the applicant at this time?
I don't have any.
Just a quick, we got the revised layout, but there were no revised elevate, like renderings or elevations, right?
It's not going to change in terms of the style. It's just that it's slid back and over a little bit.
Okay.
But otherwise, it matches pretty much the shape of the existing house, and I think we showed that the last time. So, we didn't, we didn't submit new ones because we weren't changing anything.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Paul?
The, I saw the updated plan. I mean, I really feel like we're moving in the right direction with that. I mean, you know, it is a two-sided brick house. Now, will the second structure be, will mimic that?
I don't think the plan is to mimic that, no.
It could, excuse me, Mr. Musto. It could, you know, it could mimic that. It could complement it.
I mean, this is just my opinion. I don't know how the board feels. If you feel like this is worthy of approval, I would like to see the existing structure and the one, the structure that's attached to mimic, to be the sister house of each other. I mean, we're also creating history here because this house will sit another 200 years in the back. So, I just feel like if he puts, adds on, and it doesn't complement the other house, it's just going to look like, why is that, why is that box added onto the back? That's just my personal opinion, but I like the fact that it's the only two-sided house in the town. I feel gratitude that you're not going to tear it down because there's not, no one to prevent you from tearing that down, and I think the town loses if that comes down. And if it's roughly the same structure as the existing house, and it can complement the existing house, I would support it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, on that point, I think Mr. Musto said he could consider adding the gable ends to add brick to those. It might be a little difference in terms of window layout or something, but if, the idea of mimicking, that's something you think you could do.
Yes.
I would think if he does that, it'd only be Paul's point, just the side that you come up from Pleasant Street because you won't see the other side, but just, so you, just clarification for everyone. So, Al, you're not voting on this, right? Because you didn't sit on it.
Correct. I didn't sit on it.
Yeah. So, as you know, and this is just for, as you know, Mr. Hearn, and Sarah told us, there's four people sitting and voting on this, and the applicant would need all four votes. Okay. Any elected or appointed officials that go to meeting or here in the audience who would like to express opinion on this? We did receive a letter from the Historical Commission, and I'll read it into the record. This is their second letter, and they did send an addendum to it, which I'll just touch upon. "The Norwood Historical Commission met on May 25th and voted to write to the Board of Appeals of Norwood regarding a variance requested by the applicant Edward Musto. As you know, the Norwood Historical Commission's duties and the Norwood Historical bylaws state in part to promote the cultural, education, economic, general welfare of the public through preservation and protection of distinctive characters of buildings and places significant to the history of Norwood. Emphasis added, such as the one at 241 Pleasant Street. Moreover, the applicant requests a variance, which requires showing a hardship. Part of the property was used to construct a swill to tie into the town's 201 Pleasant Street and the condo complex in the rear. The zoning request is in addition, 100%. The zoning allows 50% increase. Home was built in 1817, over 200 years ago. It is the only two-sided brick home in the town, and it's on Norwood's list of 100 sites. For all of the above reasons, this request for a variance should be denied respectfully to Ms. Howard, Chair, Chair of the..."
So, that's the June thing?
That's the June. And then she added an email.
That's when that came in today?
Yeah, that came in today. I saw that.
Do any board members need to comment on that?
And basically, this goes upon, it's an email to the board. It's part of the record, but it raises questions that are not significant to us as if it's rented to Section 8. We don't vote on that. They comment it is a beautiful home and needs rehabilitation and wants this to stay for historic integrity, which, and then she mentions the increase, again, of 100%. So, that is part of the record. I don't think it's necessary to read it because it's here regardless of who lives there for us.
Mr. Chairman, may I know, what was the date of the first?
The first one was June 5th, and the second one was today, July 31st, an email. I can give these to you, Mr. Hearn.
I just want to make sure I have the same.
I can give mine.
I have June 5th, all right.
Okay.
There was another one previously.
Yeah, but that one was, that one was already read into the record at the last meeting.
May I speak on that, though?
Want to save it? Want to save it for the end?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. And as you know, I always let you have the last word, Mr. Hearn, so...
You have the last word.
Okay.
You vote.
There is some truth to that, yes. Is there anyone here that would like to comment? Yeah, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Or if you're more comfortable standing there, that's fine, too.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Coupapatri. I live at 251 Pleasant Street, and I was born and raised in this town. I love this town, and I love my neighbors, and I love my neighborhood. I don't have any issues with Mr. Musto wanting to improve the property, but my concern is this. The soil is not graded properly, and the water, when it's, there's a storm, the water runs downhill towards my house. And Mr. Easey, you did suggest I have a conversation with Mr. Musto last time we're here. I've had numerous conversations with him, and the last conversation I had with him when I told him the water is running towards my property, he, I don't appreciate insulting my intelligence when he told me that the water is running towards Pleasant Street. Well, there's a four-foot retaining wall there. There's absolutely no way water can flow towards Pleasant Street unless there is, water flows uphill. So, my, when my father had his vegetable garden, he would lose half his crops because his plantings, because the water would run towards Cross Street. So, I feel that this can be resolved if he continues with the retaining wall that's already there, stops right at the beginning of my driveway. If he continues with that retaining wall and grades the land properly, it would resolve this. That's all I'm asking. I don't care about the dilapidated fence. I could kill us. That's not an issue with me, but it is an eyesore. But my concern about that fence, if it does fall, it's going to land right on my car, so I'm holding it up with bricks and whatever, but I have an issue with him following through with housekeeping, and if I had a neighbor that asked me to resolve something, I wouldn't, it wouldn't take me 10 years to do it. The issue here is being a good neighbor, and that's the issue I have, and I'm requesting that the retaining wall continue so the property will be graded properly. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
That's fine. I'm happy with that.
Okay. We'll pick out a condition if it gets approved.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak upon this matter? Okay, Mr. Hearn, you wanted to make some final comments?
Well, I just wanted to clarify a few things, if I could, sir. Ms., we have three letters from Ms. Howard, and I know the first one was sent, actually, before the commissioner had even taken up the matter, and she represented that they had, but they hadn't taken up the matter until the end of May. The letter today, which I only saw tonight, is, I would ask that it be struck from the record. It is full of so many factual errors. We did not sit 11 years on this property trying to, you know, with a variance that we didn't use. This, this variance, and this board knows that we got a variance in 2019 that we believe was still in effect. The building commissioner differed. You sustain the building commissioner, and that matter is in court now, but if this variance is granted, it resolves the court case. We get to dismiss it. But her statements about, suggested 11 years later, we're coming back asking for a variance, and asking questions that the chair noted have nothing to do with the matter. I would just say, this is so full of errors that it ought not to be in the record. Beyond that, I know that Ms. Howard would like to see this house preserved. The best way to preserve this house is to allow, in addition to it, that would allow it to be, to make financial sense, to be maintained going forward. Without that, the house gets to the point where it may not be worth keeping. So, we share her goal of finding a way to preserve the house. We differ in that I think her goal is, or her suggestion is, do nothing and the house will be preserved. We're saying something should be done so that the house can be preserved, and that's what we're asking for. So, I think there are good practical arguments, public benefit arguments, and good, there are legal arguments. It's a little bit different, certainly, this case. You don't usually have a case where a structure is the basis of considering the zoning conditions, but I submit to you that under the Karis case, you can do that, as unusual as it is, as a way to preserve part of our town's history. So, I do have a concern, and I expressed it to Ms. Dixon, that if we only have a four-member board and we need four out of five votes, it's, normally, we, you know, as a way to take the temperature, it helps, but...
Well, we'll have a discussion and then...
I might have a motion.
You might have a motion, yeah. Well, I certainly won't shut you off before we take that vote, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you.
And in regards to striking something from the record, it's a public document, and I don't, I think your comments cleared up that there is several discrepancies in that. There's several issues that don't affect this board.
Thank you.
So, I don't think I have the authority to strike it from the record. So, just to be clear, we're voting on the variance 4.1, 0.2, 0.1. We're voting on two variances tonight. One is to increase the size over 100%, correct, right? To have, have, I think, because Mr. Pelletier sent a letter that we're also voting on 4.1, 0.2, footnote 1, which requires 7,500 square feet, which we don't have, and then we're also voting on one other variance here, right?
The only, the only deficiency here is the size of the lot.
Right.
For a two-family house.
Okay.
That's the only deficiency.
Okay.
There's no, the setbacks are, complies with...
Yeah, no, I know it meets that, but yeah, I think we had this discussion before. What were we voting on? Were we voting on the square foot? Are we voting on the increase in the habitable area, right? We had that discussion?
No, I think there is, there has been some confusion on that. The increase in habitable area comes into play in those cases where you have the conversion of a house that predates zoning, and we get the exact, under, I see, it's under uses, conversion of a house.
I just want to...
Two-family dwelling by conversion, under the use table, footnote 1, it allows a two-family dwelling, a single-family dwelling to be converted to a two-family dwelling in the general residence zone, which is where we are, provided that the dwelling existed on July 21st, 1927, and is located on a lot meeting current lot area requirements for a single-family dwelling at that location. Those two are satisfied.
Okay.
It predates the magic date in 1927, and it meets the lot area requirements for a single-family dwelling, which is 10,000 square feet. We exceed that.
Okay.
As I was going to say, no interior enlargement is made, which, together with any changes made during the preceding five years, increases the gross floor area of the house by more than 50%. So, if we had, if we proposed a, a, an addition that was less than 50%, didn't exceed 50%, we wouldn't need any permission.
Right.
Because we're exceeding that, we don't fall within the exception under footnote 1 of the table of uses.
Right.
So, that puts us into a variance situation, which is what we did the last time that we got a variance for this same project.
And that's 4.1, 0.2, 0.1, right?
Footnote 1.
Yeah, footnote 1. So, that's, that's the only one we're voting on?
That's the dimensional requirements.
Yep.
4.1, 0.1, and it's the requirement of, and then the footnote is the requirement that you have footnote, 4.1, 0.2, footnote number 1, 7,500 square feet per dwelling unit.
Okay. Hold on just one...
So, that's the 15,000.
Okay. Hold on just one minute. But, Sarah, are you had something?
So, the variance here was advertised under 3, sorry, 3.1, 0.5A3, which was reflected on the original variance in the application documents. It was reviewed by the building commissioner, and he also recommended relief under the footnote.
Okay.
I'm not, my understanding of this, it's kind of six one-way, half-way, so...
Right. That's what, I think that's the discussion we had last time.
Which is what I think Attorney Hearn is saying as well.
Right.
And I would agree with that. I would recommend, if you are inclined to grant relief to this request, that you grant under both.
Both, yeah.
There's no harm done in granting relief under both if you feel...
Right. And that's the discussion we had last time.
Because it's quantitatively the same discussion.
Right, okay. All right, very good.
Yeah, and I think the prior decision did cover both of the questions.
Right, yeah. And that's what we talked about, one of the previous meetings. Okay. Shannon, do you have anything?
No, no further questions.
Rachel?
I'm still having a hard time. I'm with you on the discretion. I'm with you on the historical nature of the structure being, you know, permissible under the statute. I'm still having a hard time with this substantial hardship owing, having that nexus to the unique nature, and I'm just, I'm just having trouble with that. I'm with you on the discretion. I haven't gotten over the threshold of authority to get to the discretion part, and I'm curious on, you know, you noted in response to the public commentary that the 2012 decision was not relevant here. It actually looked like a relatively aligned type of request for a variance, and the board there held that, you know, to the extent any hardship might be thought to exist, it's clearly self-inflicted due to the voluntary transfer of square footage that transformed the present state from one where a two-family dwelling could have been built as a matter of right to the present single-family lot, and the And the court routinely cites self-inflicted hardship as a reason for denial of relief. And they cited Warren v. the ZVA of Amherst and Perez v. the ZVA of Norwood. And I'm wondering on that creation of the harm, with respect to both that conveyance of square footage of the lot to abutting parcels under common ownership, and also your notation about how this relief would not have been required had that original kind of wing of the structure not have been demolished. I feel like both of those counts are independent issues as far as creation of the basis for the need for the variance. And this board has already determined, at least on the square footage issue, that that's not really the purpose of variance relief, and cited several cases there. Can you get me over the hump, at least on those issues?
Well, I think the issue, the but for that we have here is that, a couple of things. If we had 4,000 and some odd square feet more than we have, we have 10,000, I don't remember the exact...
7, 70.
Yeah, 7, yeah.
10,000, 700 something?
7, 70.
77. Okay. So if we had, say, another close to 5,000 feet, how many could go? We'd have 15,000, we could put a two-family in there as a matter of right. But we don't have that. So that leads to the request for a variance to have a two-family. If the addition were not more than 50 percent in size, we'd qualify under note number one. If he had not taken down the L years ago, which was sitting on ground and was rotting, so it made sense, public safety, fire concern, all that stuff, to get rid of it. Seemed like a good idea at the time, like a lot of things we do. But if that portion of the structure was still there, we wouldn't have the over 50 percent problem.
Right.
So it's a combination, there are various things that have happened over the years. Now, in 2019, the board saw fit to grant the exact same relief we're looking for now, and accepted all the arguments that we had a, in terms of the circumstances and the hardship and all that, that we had a, we had a unique house, and it cited that. And the allowing or requiring it to be maintained in its present condition would prevent the responsible and desirable upgrading and enhancement of the property in a manner consistent with other homes in the area. And it is, you know, they cited the difficulty, the upkeep, the updating, yeah, we've got people living there, but it's not really what it should be and what it could be. And the way to do that is to say, you know, and so it becomes a hardship. Can I fix this house up? You can't afford to fix up. It's, I don't want to say lipstick and a pig, but it's like, how much can you put into a house that is limited by what it is? The solution is, add on, create a second unit. You've got money coming in, then you are able to upgrade. When you're building one, you're able to upgrade the rest of it, and bring it up to standards that are more suitable for where we are today. So there's some hardship there. You can't do that unless you have this relief that allows the addition. So I guess the question I have for you, Ms. Churchill, is, are we, are you, are you asking about the idea of granting a variance with respect to the structure, or are you focusing more on the hardship?
I'm, I'm with you on the structure. I'm on board. It's a unique structure. There's none other like it in the entire town, let alone the district. As a matter of discretion, I would like to be able to grant you a relief. I'm just having a hard time with the substantiation of a substantial hardship, which I agree can be financial in nature. And having that substantial hardship have the nexus owing to, not only is it an old home, we have a lot of old homes, but owing to what's been proffered as the unique nature of the home, which is not only that it's old, but it has those two brick sides. And kind of on that issue of the demolition, I'm seeing that as a creation of the hardship. You know, again, probably the right decision at the time. The bylaw allows for a five-year lookback, so there were five years in which it could have been rebuilt as of right under that footnote. And during that time, it wasn't. And that almost tells me that it wasn't actually a financial hardship, because it was preceded to be used with that smaller square footage after that demolition. And I'm trying to find something I can hang my hat on. I'm just having a hard time that the, there is a financial, substantial financial hardship that's owing to the unique nature of the home. And the unique nature of the home is not only that it's old, but that it is a two-sided brick structure. And part of the reason why I'm having a hard time getting over that hurdle is the prior versions of the plan interfered with that side. Now, the revised plan totally removes that, but to me, it kind of poisoned the well, because if it really was owing to the unique two-sided brick nature, it never would have been proposed in a manner that interfered with the side. I'm just having a hard time getting over that hump of authority. I'm with you on the discretion, but I'm not at the point where I can exercise discretion, in my view.
I think that, I mean, you say that no action was taken. The 2019 variance was granted, and action was taken to build, to begin the process of building the addition that was authorized, which was actually going to cover the side. The board was not concerned, but it was going to eliminate much of that brick side on the southerly side of the house. And we came back in with pretty much the same plan as had been approved in 2019. So he did take action, under a variance that was granted to allow this addition. We disagree on the extent of that, and we'll leave it, if we have to, we'll leave it to a land court judge. We prefer to resolve it here, because we get a variance, and we don't need to appeal the prior decisions. But he did take action. So to say, and I don't, I don't agree with you that he sat on it for years and didn't do something. He took action.
It might be my misunderstanding of the footnote, that if the dwelling existed on July 21, 1927, not otherwise meeting the requirements for a single-family dwelling, no interior enlargement is made, which, together with any changes during the preceding five years, increases the gross floor area of the house by more than 50 percent.
So the point of that...
So, I guess, and I'm just trying to understand, so tell me where I'm not aligning.
On that point?
So, so there was this wing in the back that really needed to be demolished for various safety reasons.
Yeah.
Had that wing not been demolished, then the addition substantially as proposed would have been allowed as of right, with that wing still existing, or at any time within five years of demolition of that wing?
You know, the five years relates to, five years relates, so let's say you've got a house that's 2,000 square feet, and it falls within that July 20, pre-July 21, 1927, and it's in the general residence zone or apartment zone. Those are the two zones that allow it. So let's say in 2023, you applied for, you filed a request for a building permit to add 800 feet to that, 2,000 square foot. Well, it looks like you're under the 50 percent there. But it turns out that in 2019, you put on a small addition that added 300 feet. And you did, so they're looking at, what's the cumulative effect of additions to a structure? Not just what you're proposing now, but what happened in the five years preceding. Otherwise, everybody would figure out a way to start building small additions to the house. And that's intended to prevent that from happening as a way to circumvent the exception that's allowed under note one. That's what the five years is about. Has nothing to do with whether you take action or not. It's a lookback of, okay, you want to, you say you qualify under that exception. We'll review it first to see, in the building department, did you add anything on in the last five years so that, taken with your current proposed addition, those, any changes in the last five years, taken with what you're now proposing, would exceed 50 percent? Then you don't qualify for it.
Okay.
That's what the five years is about.
So it's the, it's the progression of prior additions as opposed to...
Within five years.
Reconstruction of prior, prior wings or portions of the home.
You can't just say, my present proposal is, doesn't exceed 50 percent, if the other things you did in the five years leading up to it would push it over the 50 percent.
And then can you also, on the other piece of the creation of the harm that was cited in that, I think it was 2012 case about, yeah, 2012, about the conveyance of square footage of the prior perimeter of the lot to abutting parcels? Because I think the principal issue here is also, the size of the lot doesn't support the two-family structure, and, and the 2012 decision says that that was a creation of the harm that undermines the ability to grant the variance.
Well, you know, some may argue that that was perhaps a self-inflicted hardship. That was done to add land to the condo project, wasn't it?
Back in 2006, 2005, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, 2005, 2004.
That was done years before with the, we did that, when he was building the condominiums. Added land to that to make that project work better. And that was at a time when this house still would have allowed the addition we're talking about, because it still had the 10, it has more than 10,000 square feet. So, you know, in a way, it wasn't a self-inflicted hardship in that you still could have added on to the house with what was there. In retrospect, you might say it was not the best decision to make, but at the time it was made, he still had 10,000 square feet, and he still had an L on that house that would have qualified him for a reasonably sized addition without, without, you know, and falling within that exception under note one. Once the L came down, then the arithmetic changed. But at the time, that conveyance of land was shifted over to the condominium project he was developing. It made sense, and it was all authorized, and it left him with a, you know, conforming house for a single family and for two-family under the special rule for older houses. So it was a self, it turns out, perhaps, to be a self-created problem, but at the time and for years after, it actually would not have, to have appeared to have been. So it's one of these things, we're looking back on it, see, we kind of wish we hadn't done it, or we wish we'd kept that decrepit L in place, but that was a safety concern, a structural concern. And in 2019, the board agreed that, yeah, you know, we know what the history is, but we also know that this is, this kind of makes sense to allow the addition to the house. It helps to preserve the house. It's a hardship maintaining a 200-year-old house, that there's only so much you can do with it, but if you add on, then financially, you make it a more viable, you know, project. Now, you know, hardship, substantial hardship, and the language in the statute, and I suppose it becomes a matter of degree, but he's wanted to do this for years to be able to, I'm looking for my copy of the statute here, but, to be able to add on to this house to make it work better, to make it more usable, to make it a better neighborhood, neighbor, rather, for the other houses in the neighborhood to fit in better. That's what he's trying to do. So, you know, how do you define substantial hardship? He'd say, substantial hardship, I can't fix this house up. I've gone about as far as I can afford to go. And if I want this house to be more viable, I need to add on an apartment to it, or a second unit. That's, that's where he is, and that's what he's been trying to do. That's what the prior board agreed with. You don't have to agree with them, but I'm just saying, they had agreed with that. And what happened back nearly 20 years ago, when the condos were being built, wasn't creating a hardship at that time, because of what was on the site at that time. But it came to a point where you just couldn't hang on to the L. Now, we've got pictures of it at some point, looking at them. It was a big addition off the back of the house, and so many of the houses of that era had those. And if we could have kept it, we wouldn't be here tonight. Wouldn't have been here in 2019, perhaps, in all the intervening times. So I think if you look at it that way, his description, the prior testimony, what I'm saying to you, there's a hardship here. How do you define substantial? There's a hardship here. This isn't just a walk in the park for him. This is, this hard work to make this work. And, but the only way you can make it work, really, is to allow, otherwise, the house gets to be almost more of a financial liability than anything else. And then, you know, how long do you keep it? That's it.
Can I show anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. So there's been no, I just want to clear up, 3.1, 0.6, 0.1, the footnote, there's been no additional interior increase in the last five years. So we're over that threshold.
No additions to the house that we changed that, right?
And I remember when the L was there, and I remember seeing the rot along, because there's no foundation, it was on stone, right? And it was rot on the wood. And, and I had a brief conversation with Mark Schubert regarding this. And the sense I get from Mark that if he wasn't going to take it down, he was going to get an order from the town to take it down. Is that kind of correct at that time?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So it's, it was going that way. And I, and I remember the L, because I traveled that, quoted my wife, 10 years traveling down that road to get to Cross Street, so...
You're talking about ancient, I won't say ancient history, but not something in the last couple of years.
So, here's where I'm at. I think this board has worked really hard to save that house, because this house, by right, tomorrow morning, Mr. Musto, who's off the building department, pull the demolition permit, and everything that the historical commission wants to save is done. It's gone. And he has the right to do that. He hasn't done that. It was important, from what I got from the historical commission, when they were here presently, and from their letters, that this was the only house with the two-brick side, and only house, almost in Norfolk County, that still existed like that. And that was very important to them. And I know that, in my comments to Mr. Musto and Mr. Hearn, that I wasn't going to vote on anything unless we saved the two sides of that house. I see this plan before me. It does do that. And Mr. Musto has said that he'll, to Mr. Essie's point, he'll build a house that will be similar, have, might not be brick, but they make the brick facade that they drop in there, very efficient. And it looks very nice. And it is nice, coming up Pleasant Street, seeing that, that brick, and I enjoy seeing it. I think there's a hardship here. I think Mr. Hearn, I think the neighbor, and we're going to make that a condition, Marie, Nancy, sorry, but I think Nancy helped your case when she said the topography, which is one of our conditions, right? That the water's running off of the topography is an effect, and I think you made a good argument with the uniqueness of the house. I think we have an opportunity here to, to save something that otherwise, you know, at some point, Mr. Musto's either going to win his case, which he probably has a strong chance, because there was a previous board that voted on it, or he's going to take the house down and build a single-family that meets today's standards. So that's where I'm at. You know, I always read and bring my sheet of the variance criterias, and you cited the Karas case, the uniqueness. I think there is an irregular shape to the lot. There is some topography issues brought up by Anna Butter. The big one, I think, we're trying to get over is how would it, would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, obviously, those older houses are harder to upkeep, because they basically are functionally obsolescent, and there, there's a difficulty there. And if adding this structure allows you to keep that structure in its present condition, and I don't think it is any detriment to the public good, actually, I think it exceeds the public good. I think we want to see that house, and already see so many houses torn down. And I don't think we're, they're delegating from the intent. So that's where I'm at. I don't know where the board members are. Well, I'd like to hear what Ms. Greenwell has to say. I mean, we're kind of giving our opinion, what your thoughts are, and whether you feel you could proceed with this or not.
Yeah, and I, I was in, I think I was very similar to Ms. Churchill in that I fully appreciated the uniqueness of the structure. It was just making that connection between the hardship that the applicant was facing and the uniqueness of the structure. I do appreciate that the addition has been pushed... I do appreciate that the addition has been pushed towards the rear, enabling the, maintaining those historic sides of the structure. I think that we would be acting in, I mean, I guess we could say yes to this addition under the premise that the increased income from the addition would allow the applicant to be able to maintain the existing historic structure. And there's, I don't think any way that we can guarantee that. So that would sort of be a leap of, a leap of good faith on our part that sort of, the uniqueness of the structure will be able to be maintained by the vehicle we're granting, which is this second unit producing enough income that they're able to pay for both the new unit and upkeep and restoration of the current unit. And I think that's just sort of out of our jurisdiction. We're just granting use authority, not anything about what's going to happen afterwards. I think the responses that you were able to give to Ms. Churchill's questions about the nexus between the financial hardship and sort of walking us through how we ended up asking for the variance was helpful for me. Yeah, so I'm in a much better position now to be able to vote on it than I was at our last meeting.
Thank you. And Al, I know you're not voting on this, but did you have any comment on it?
Just two. One of which was the condition that we talked, that was brought up in the discussion about the topography and the water flow off the property and the retaining wall as a condition. That's one that I'd like to see incorporated into it. And the other is from the second meeting that we had, there was talk of abandonment of certain sewer lines and new sewer. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's, it shows here that the existing eight-inch sewer drain. Is that something that was physically done since the original submission?
No, the, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With the relocation of the proposed addition.
There's no.
We believe that the sewer line can be maintained. It might have to be a slight shift of it, but not, you know, the, the originally proposed addition, and this was the one that was, you know, and as approved also back in 2019, would have required the sewer line to be moved along the westerly and then the northerly fence, following that line and then coming out to the street. By shifting the addition back, the need to do that is pretty much eliminated. We think that, and the engineer has told us that that's a bonus of this relocation, that he thinks he can leave it there, that there would be enough room to put it in and not have that relocation required.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, because, so if we, if we were to grant this, it's just about the convert, allowing the two-family. If the applicant then wanted to have an addition that was exceeding elevations or setbacks, is that something that would have to come back? Because we're not really seeing any details about the elevations of the proposed structure. Is that something that would have to come back again or?
He has to stay within the 30 elevation, the building code, yeah.
Exactly. We, Mr. Chairman, we have to stay within it. We're, the, we're well outside of the side yard, front, you know, requirements, you know, we're not violating any of those requirements, same with rear yard. The addition does not violate the front yard or anything like that. There's one point, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, shifting papers around here, but with respect to the statute, the, the question of hardship refers to financial or otherwise to the petitioner. So we think there's a financial hardship of having to maintain this house as it is that can be obviated by your granting the relief. You might look at it, there's another hardship too that, to him to some extent, that he's tried to keep this house going and maybe to others also, that if the house could not be preserved, the loss of the house is a, it's not a financial hardship, that's the otherwise. So I, I, I think that the, the facts of this case would support granting the relief. Yes, it is an exercise of your discretion and, and it is an unusual situation, but I think it makes it across the line if, if the board members feel that. If it's not going to make it across the line tonight, then I would ask that we continue.
Let's, let's, let us continue on, thanks to the board. Rachel, have you been satisfied with what you've heard from the applicant and what you've heard from the other board members?
Like your last two sentences are getting my cogs going about the or otherwise. I still, I'm, I'm with you on the structure. I'm with you on the uniqueness. I can even be with you that there's a financial hardship that exists. I, I can't say that the financial hardship has the nexus required under the statute due to, due to the unique nature of the two-sided structure, but I'm chewing on the substantial hardship of the or otherwise. I'm chewing on it. I'm, I may be persuaded, I don't know if I can get over that fence in the next 10 minutes, but I'm, I'm trying to find a way to find the authority under the statute because I don't think avoiding undesirable outcomes is, you know, authority to expand beyond what the statute allows us to do. I don't want those undesirable outcomes. I want to find a way to be able to say, yes, I feel good, like I have the authority. And I think that or otherwise is something that I can maybe get, get that nexus with.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in response to that, it's the existing of existence of a house that's going to need, was going to need constant upkeep. It has needed a fair amount and is going to just by its age without the addition. So a literal enforcement of the bylaw, the terms of the bylaw would create the hardship. It's not the house that creates the hardship, it's the unique house that puts us in this situation. But without the relief, the hardship to him is, he's going to have to spend more and more money on this without the extra income that would come. And ultimately might, might just decide, no, I'm heck with it, for all the work I've done, all the, I've tried to preserve this, I just can't do it. And that's the, some of the otherwise, I'm going to have to knock it down. And the best way to preserve this house is to allow the addition. And so there are factors, financial and there are factors that sort of otherwise. And I, I would hope you would see that that, and some of them are a little difficult maybe to describe or to, if we think about the way some people look at this house, the historical commission's sending letters and emails saying, hey, preserve the house. And as the chairman, I think pointed out, he could knock it down tomorrow if he wanted to, he'd prefer not to if he could save. We're not going through this exercise for the fun of it, we're doing it because he wants to save, but if he can't, he can't. And, and there is a cost to maintaining these old houses. So I'd ask you to, to think about that, that, you know, is there enough to get over this? And this is why we have boards that have to decide for themselves whether, you know, it's enough of a hardship in a particular case. A matter of case has the same level of hardship or the same type of hardship, but is this the case where the board exercising its authority, its discretion decides, yeah, for this particular case it's enough, may not be enough for the next one. And I've heard from many zoning board members saying, oh, that last decision isn't precedent for you. Because they also say, no, we wouldn't do it for them, so we can't do it for you, so we go both ways. But I, I, you know, I'd ask you to think if you, if you can see this, that there's a hardship financially maintaining this and there's another hardship after all this, if he has to take it, it ends up being lost, it's lost to the town, it's lost to him. And that, but allowing the extension of the house as requested is going to, goes a long way to ensuring the survival of the original structure, just as other older structures around us in town and other places get added on to. You know, I was thinking about the Bullfinch State, State House, you know, beautiful building. We look at that, you know, people realize there are all kinds of extensions off the back of it as needs arose. Same thing here, we have a need that arises, but we get to preserve a structure that's historic in our town. So I'd ask you to think about that.
All right. Do you want to, can you continue this till the end of the meeting or does the board want to move forward? What are the wishes of the board? Well, if Ms., I mean, I respect Ms. Churchill's opinion. I mean, if she feels that she doesn't have the authority to grant this, then, you know, I respect that. But I, I feel also that maybe this should be continued to the next, next meeting. I'm going to ask the administrator if we can make sure Mary Kate sees this tape so she can absorb all the information that happened tonight. And, you know, and Ms. Churchill, give her time, you know, maybe she may not change her opinion or maybe she may see some light. So you know what I mean? I respect your opinion. I mean, if you feel like you don't have the authority to grant it, then you shouldn't grant it. You know, there's a lot of positives and a lot of negatives, but I say that this gets, gets continued to the next hearing because if we don't have four votes, this thing is going to go by the wayside and I don't think that's fair to the applicant. I don't know what Mary Kate's going to do, but I think that she needs to listen to all this information and, and absorb it. And I also would like Mrs., Ms. Cota Patarey and the applicant to define the wall. I know, Mr. Chairman, you said we'd put it in as a condition, but I don't want to create another problem. I want, would like to know where it begins, where it ends and the height of it and that it matches the existing walls. So if we can work on all this stuff, I know it's a, it's a delay, you know, Mr. Hearn, but I, I feel that that's the direction it should go. That's just my opinion.
I'll take that as a motion. A motion by Mr. Easie to continue this to our next meeting at September 12th, 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center and also go to meeting, Zoom meeting, Google Meet. That's the motion. Is there a second?
On the motion, I think that would be helpful. I, I would like to have the time to digest. I, I want to, something that I can hang my hat on. Appreciating my colleagues' comments because I think, again, avoiding undesirable outcomes should not be the basis for avoiding the limitations of the statute. So I want to chew on everything that's been presented. And if I can't get over the hurdle, if we can have another board member who can, I think that would be helpful. And then maybe as a comment to planning, as part of the master plan, maybe we can contemplate some way to have special permit authority related to historical structures. I don't even know if that's possible, but if we can get this out of the realm of variances, I think it might be helpful for future matters.
So I'll take that as a second.
I'll take that a second, yeah.
Thank you and thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. So there's been a motion made and second to continue this to our next meeting. I previously stated the time and the place. Paul?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And chairperson votes yes. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
I thank you for your time and.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Just to clarify, so this continuance is to afford board members additional time to review the facts and testimony that have been presented to them this evening, also to allow Mary Kate Daly to participate via the Mullen Rule at the next hearing. Is the board also in agreement that they'd like to see the butter work with the applicant to present a plan for the retaining wall or grading or any of those other conditions?
Can you, can you just provide a, a landscape plan with the retaining wall? Is that, is that something that would be difficult?
I think we can provide, I don't know how much detail Nancy you need or want, but if you're going to, if, if a decision is issued that includes a condition, then it probably would be helpful for you, for us to have talked, Ms. Cota Patarey and Mr. Musto to have talked and come in with as much detail as they can, sufficient for their purposes so that you can reference that as a condition if you want.
Okay, that's fair enough.
So if you leave it to us without getting too detailed now.
I'm going to leave it to you and you're, you're in charge of this, Mr. Hearn, so you make sure it happens.
Thank you.
Thank you for the golden fiber message. I just wanted to share about what our homework is.
And the hearing is, is not closed.
The hearing is still open.
For further information. Thank you.
And Mr. Churchill, would it, for the retaining, I just feel like if we're going to be doing site work, that is, I mean, we wouldn't want a retaining wall based on the topography of the site as it is. It would probably have to be based on the site with the addition on it. So can we make, rather than seeing plans that may become outdated when you are putting your addition on, can we put in a condition that just says something about, and when you are working with engineers to actually design the proposed addition, that drainage is evaluated and a retaining wall is put into?
My recommendation would be to let the applicant and the butter come to that language and propose it because if they're comfortable with the language, then I think that would be a good recommendation.
One way or the other, I'm, I'm going to work with Nancy. There's not going to be a drainage issue one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Musto. Yep, thank you, Mr. Hearn. Do you have 761, Mr. Hearn? Is that you too? Do you want me to take that next? Are you ready?
If you would.
Okay, yep. This is case 23-14, 761 Washington Street Special Permit. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on August 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM on the request of Christopher Pasadia. Please forgive me if I pronounced your name wrong.
Pasada.
Pasada, thank you, sir. Represented by David Hearn Jr., Esquire, regarding property located at 761 Washington Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the single resident zoning district. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available via remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit under the zoning bylaw, section 5.2 and 10.4, to allow the extension of a non-conforming use, in this case, a residential apartment and building that was previously authorized by special permit for use as a dentist office. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence with the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It may be requested by emailing CPED@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Mr. Hearn, please introduce yourself.
I will, again, David Hearn Jr. of Gellman Cabral at 30 Wallpole Street in Norwood.
Thank you, sir.
I am here representing the owner of the property at 761 Washington Street and the owner is actually a limited liability company in the name, by the name of Endo Care Rental LLC. With me this evening is Dr. Christopher Pasada, who is one of the managers of the LLC and practices at that location, among others, and the other manager of the LLC, who is his wife, Urania Fotios. This is a property that is on Washington Street, pretty much a guile, opposite Guile Park, right where Washington Street turns out of the downtown. There is a church on the corner where Wallpole and Washington Streets meet and then the next building is this, looks like a house. And it was a house. And in the 19, late 1970s, there was a hearing actually in, for the zoning board in June of 1978. And the then occupants, the Ryans, William and Bill and Ryan, were, went before the board to allow the conversion of the house existing on the date of the bylaw. And that house actually was built according to the assessive records in 1922, so it predates its owning by five years, to allow the conversion of that house to be used as an office for the practice of medicine by one or more physicians or dentists, not residents of the premises. And there was other relief granted with respect to parking in park because it was a recognition that there was plenty of on-street parking on Washington Street, on both sides of Washington Street. So the zoning board in 1978 granted the relief and the Ryans sold the house, moved out of it. They had found themselves in a situation where according to the, according to the testimony that's noted in the decision, Dr. Ryan had been operating there and he used it, part of the property for his medical practice. The, it had been used as an office for the practice of medicine pretty much since 1927. And it's been on, it had been on the market, but they were having difficulty selling it because, as a single-family dwelling because of the high operating costs and its location approximate to the central business district. Now, something that I was not really aware of until I had this case come to me. Now, something that I was not really aware of until I had this case come to me, that this area that we're talking about, bounded by Walpole Street and Washington Street, is single residence. And in fact, my law office is catty-corner to this particular property. And we're in a single-residence district right across from the library. Why that is, I don't know. But you look at the zoning map, and it's a single-residence district. So in 1978, the zoning board gave permission for what was not allowed use, but gave permission for what is essentially a nonconforming use, permitted by special permit, to allow it to be used for medical purposes and dental purposes. And it's been used since that time for, generally for dental practices. Dr. Pasada has worked there since 1999. He hasn't owned it that time, but he has worked in that building since that time and continues to work there. And he's been, he lived in Norwood for a time. He's actually been active in the town, part of a group that has provided reduced-cost dental care to elderly. There's a group that vets people, and the discounts are based upon income and so forth. And he's been doing that for years, contributing to the town. But what happened a few months ago was that, and by the way, there's always been somebody living in that house. There's a third-floor apartment. And all the time that Dr. Pasada's been there, there's been somebody there. I've looked through the street list books going back to, I went back to the early 80s. And the street list book shows somebody living there in those years. Couple of years can't find somebody, but sometimes people don't fill out the census forms. But there was one woman that lived there from 1985 to about 2006, and had a, had a husband or boyfriend, was there for several of those years. Other people who lived there. At some point a few months ago, the building commissioner became aware that work had been done on the third-floor apartment. There had been some updating of the apartment before a new tenant came in. And unfortunately, it turns out, there were not building permits pulled. The building commissioner became aware of that and sent a notice of violation to Dr. Pasada, to the LLC. And also said that you've got an apartment there that, in addition to work having been done that was not duly permitted, there's no legal authority for a person to live there in the apartment that's been there since, we believe, the early 1980s, when, after the house, after the house was sold and then renovated for medical offices, dental offices. So I discussed it with the building commissioner, and he told me that I was concerned that he was going to require the tenant to move out. And he told me that his inspectors had looked at the work that had been done. They were satisfied that there were not safety issues there, but it was a violation for not having pulled the permits. And there's a zoning concern, and that's what brings us here. And his instructions to me were, deal with the zoning. If you get the zoning relief, fine. Then your client can come in, Dr. Pasada or a contractor can come in, and apply for the appropriate permits. They'll do whatever further inspections they want, and they will be able to sign off and close the book on it. And they will hold off, he told me, on any enforcement of this matter or bring it to the district court or anything like that while this is pending and while we're going through the process. Again, there were no safety issues that they noted. Dr. Pasada, when he hired a contractor to do this work, was informed that, well, you're not doing any substantial, so you don't need any permits. I think that was wrong, and I don't know the building code really, but I can understand why the building commissioner would be concerned. And so he, his marching orders were essentially, go to the zoning board, see if you can get this allowed. Now, what we're looking for, we need a special permit relief to allow the use of the third-floor apartment that's been there all these years, the continued use of that apartment, but with a recognition by this board that that use would be allowed as an extension of what is really nonconforming use. The use of a property in a single-family district, you know, exists because of special permit relief. So we've got a nonconforming use, and we're essentially asking to allow an extension of that use that does not harm, the property does not harm the neighborhood or would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. If you look at the bylaw, there is a provision, you know, that was contemplated in some districts, that you would have dwelling units in combination with stores or other permitted commercial uses, including, say, a medical office or dental office, not normally allowed in a single-family district, the commercial use. But the commercial use was allowed in 1978. So we're trying to make a use of it. My client wants to make a use of it that is consistent with it being in a residential zone. And all the time he's been there, and the records that I looked at, that predate Dr. Pasada coming to work at that site, all indicate that there have been people there, pretty much going back to the beginning of its use as a commercial property. After it was sold in, well, the decision was in 1978. So after that, they were able to find somebody to buy it and set it up. The, you know, the standard that you look at for special permit relief is, is this going to cause harm? Is it going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? We submit that it's not going to be substantially more detrimental. It's been going on all these years without a problem. There's parking on the site for the tenant and for employees. There's plenty of parking on the street for people who come. Dr. Pasada tells me that there are never more than three professionals working in the building at any one time. He has a couple of other offices, and so people move around to different offices. Three separate practices, his and two others. But this has not created a problem. It only came up because somehow or other, the building commissioner became aware that work was done without a permit. And while he's looking, he looks into their history and says, hey, there's nothing on record that allows the use of the apartment. Go get that taken care of, then we'll deal with the permits. So that's what we're asking for tonight.
So right now, there isn't anyone living there because the building was, was being renovated, the unit, right?
No, they are living there.
Oh, they're living there now?
The renovations were complete.
Were done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Pasada didn't believe it had been renovated in many years, and it was time to up, you know, freshen it up. And that's the work that was done.
Okay, all right. So there is someone living there now?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Okay, any questions for members of the board before we open it up to the public?
I just have, how big is the building?
Is the property...
Yeah, how big?
Let me check the record on that.
I've got the property card here. I just passed it to Mr. Easie.
I mean, when you go by, it looks like a residential dwelling.
It does.
You know, you'd have to really look to see that it's a dentist. You know what I mean? So he's basically really, what he really wants to do is just legalize the apartment that's been occupied the last 25 years.
I'd say the last...
Fifty.
Fifty. Almost perhaps 40 years. Early 80s to now. I mean, I find records, I went over to the library, mainly located across the street. Went over there one afternoon and went through all the street lists and made a note of who had lived there. And it said there's one woman who lived there for most of that time.
But is the residential just on the third floor?
Just the third floor.
And he's going to continue with the doctor's office through the main house?
That's right. So the card, the assessor's card, I was just looking at, the first floor is about 2,300, a little more than that, 2,300 square feet, almost 1,300 above that. There's a finished half-story of about, living area of about 1,029 square feet. And there's an unfinished basement, but that's not counting toward habitable space. But if you included the basement, you get about 6,200 feet. Otherwise, habitable space, 4,654, according to the assessor. And the apartment is reached mainly by a stairway built off the back.
And how many bedrooms is the apartment?
How many bedrooms? What is it? One bedroom?
One bed. No further questions. Thanks. Shannon?
Yeah, is there any dedicated parking for the apartment on the site?
Yes.
So you already have a space that's dedicated? Because that was something that I was thinking. If we added that use, would we have to add some parking? Or relieve some parking associated with that?
When I left the office tonight, that space was occupied by the same car I see all the time. And I believe it's a tank. It comes back at the end of the day.
Got it. Yeah, no other questions.
Yeah. Rachel?
My mind just goes to 48, Section 7, but this seems to relate to use as opposed to the structure, because it's been in continuous use for an excess of 10 years, and there hasn't been any intervening notice of violation, right? I mean, isn't this either directly or parallel?
I think use is excluded from that statute of limitations if it's an unpermitted use.
Yeah.
In other words, a use that's permitted, even if it's erroneously permitted, ripens to a, and the statute of limitations runs. A, a structure that is permitted, even though in error, is protected by the statute of limitations. And then there are structures that are permitted, that aren't permitted, you know, aren't, you know, built according to permit, but at a certain time are protected. It's uses that aren't covered by that second...
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, and that's why, I'd love to say that that bylaw didn't.
Yeah, I mean, that's where my, where I went, and then I saw it's structures, not uses. But longstanding, decades, 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 that this has been in continuous use as a residence. And we're just...
But the statute doesn't run on the use because it was never authorized.
Yeah, but that's why, so that's why we're...
That's why we're here.
Doing a special permit as opposed to just having it be deemed to be lawful, nonconforming.
Right. I think if you grant the permit, you then cover it going forward so that the permitted dental use and the permit of the department with it then are protected going forward, if you grant the permit.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Al?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here, president or elected official, like to comment on this matter? Saying none? Anyone here like to speak in favor or against this matter? Anyone want to go to meeting, Google Meet, whatever it is these days? Okay. I don't have any comments. I don't think, Mr. Hearn, you can make small comments, but I don't think it's necessary.
I have any more to say, thank you.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board? We can move to close the public hearing? Yep, so a motion's been made to close the public hearing by Shannon.
A second.
Seconded by Paul. Paul, to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Yes, public hearing is closed. What is the wishes of the board?
You know, I feel like the applicants, they do an impeccable job maintaining their property.
It looks nice.
Every time you go by Washington Street, you always have it well-groomed. And it's very normal to see apartments above businesses along our main street. I just feel like they got the raw deal because they're in an S-zone. So, I mean, I would, I would support it.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion to approve this application.
Mr. Easie has made a motion to approve, approve the application. And I believe Mr. Hearn hit on all the special permit criterias. Do you agree, Sarah? Mr. Hearn had touched upon them all? Yep, okay.
A written application, we certainly...
Yes, yep.
It responded to all of those. No negative effects, utilities, traffic, or anything else.
Yep, okay.
Ms. Tretchel?
Second.
Yeah, okay, seconding. Let's discuss the motion.
I was going to say, do, by adding the ability for the residential dwelling, does that then carry the parking, required parking associated with that? Or could we add to the motion that there is a dedicated parking space in the lot associated with the residential?
We can certainly, yeah, that's, we can certainly do that. The only thing I was going to add, that there is a basement there that no, no living, no one person live or sleep in the basement, so...
And it sounds like somebody is already utilizing a space in the parking lot, so that...
There's a sign in the parking lot that says tenant parking.
Oh, great, it's already done. Perfect.
It's already done, okay. Okay, motion's been made. And second, the only thing, there is a basement. The basement's unfinished, I take it? Okay.
That's storage or...
Storage, okay. And the basement, and my petition, I would make that the basement space be only used for storage. And Ms. Greenwald said that the sign continues to remain on the property for the tenant. Is there a question on that?
Well, you're limiting, I mean, it could be used for commercial purpose. I don't think they plan to, but that building's authorized.
Okay, so I'll rephrase it, that it be only used for storage and commercial and no residential?
That's fine.
Okay, yeah. I don't like those things, but, okay. So that's the motion amended, that the sign remain on the premises for tenant parking only, and that the basement area be for storage or commercial use, no residential use. The motion has been made and seconded. Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chairperson votes yes. Congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Good evening.
Thank you very much.
See you next month. It's not a birthday or a holiday or a anniversary. Usually we catch you on one of your, your wife's birthday or your birthday or your anniversary.
I think the last time we, one of these, it was a wedding anniversary, but all is well, thank you.
Okay. We try to accommodate you, sir. No. Okay, thank you very much. The next case is case 23-23, 460 Pleasant Street Special Permit. Yeah, let me read the, read the notice here. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on August 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM on the request of Giovanna Petri. Again, I apologize if I pronounced the name wrong. Regarding property located at 460 Pleasant Street in the single-family zoning district, the hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw, Section 5.4.4, nonconforming structures to construct in addition to the existing single-family residence that would create an increase in floor area that exceeds 25%. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence with the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing CPED@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And I just do want to comment on these two that are coming tonight, 460 and 9 Phillips. And these plans are very good. This is what I look for, so... Okay, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Giovanna Petri, and I am from 1883 St. Marlborough.
Okay.
G.C. representing the Poli...
Okay, and you're the, you're the builder?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Tell us what you want to do there, sir.
So basically, we'd like to add a small area foundation. The total of addition to the house, it would be pretty close to, I've got the number here, because I don't have information. Pretty close to 672 square feet more into the house. Mostly of the addition would be done towards the back of the house. From the front of the house, it would be pretty much the same. On the left-hand side of the house, you may see a little bit from the rear roof that we're planning to create. And from our point of view, there's no harm for the neighborhood. And it's basic, you know.
Okay. Okay, what are the questions or concerns of the board?
Paul? I mean, am I correct to say you meet all the dimensional requirements?
Oh, it's nonconforming.
The house itself is nonconforming, and this is the reason we have to come to the Board.
All right, but the side yard, the rear yard?
I didn't see a...
The height?
The height is fine. I recognized the height. I did see the...
Well, he's not asking for any relief with respect to side yard or rear yard or front yard or anything like that.
No. No, it's nonconforming. So I think from what I looked at today, it looks a little on the side. We didn't get a plot plan on this, huh? That's the only thing...
This does not create any nonconformity.
No, okay. If you want to pass that to Paul, yeah.
That was the question.
I thought I had a problem, but, yeah, yeah.
I believe the house is nonconforming because on the right side, it doesn't meet the setbacks. We're not meeting anything towards that side. And the setbacks on the rear of the house and the left side of the house...
I'm going to give a question.
Oh, here's my copy. I always print this. I don't know why I didn't have it, okay. And there was a letter from the Building Department that the expansion of the pre-existing nonconforming single-family home expansion of the pre-existing nonconforming single-family home beyond twenty-five percent per five point four. The expansion will require a zoning permit from Z B A in S District. The addition will not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure or create any additional nonconforming. And a special permit is supported by this office, no other comments. Signed Gary Palatia, Building Commissioner, C C Sarah Bush, uh, Sarah Dixon, Norwood Town Council. Okay, Shannon, anything?
Um, no, I don't have any questions, I think there's houses of all, like, varying sizes along the road, so I don't think that the addition puts it out of character with other houses in the area. And you're meeting all of the, you're not increasing your nonconformity further, so I didn't have any additional questions.
Uh, Rachel, or?
Nothing else.
Al, anything?
What is the percentage over the twenty-five?
Uh, so what is the, uh, you said six hundred and how many square feet is the addition?
Six hundred and seventy-two. I don't have the exact
Seventy-two.
Percentage.
And the existing house size now, uh, is how much, sir? Actually, pull an assesses card and they didn't. Do you know what the existing is? Uh, can you go and assesses there, uh, Shannon?
I.
For assesses?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Al, we'll get that in one moment. Uh, any other questions? Well, Shannon, we'll look that up.
No, actually, I'm just looking to see.
The, the living area is fourteen forty-two square feet.
Okay, you got it, so fourteen forty-two, so we're adding six hundred and seventy-two now. So, that would be seventy-two.
Close to fifty percent, that's about forty.
Forty-two, yeah, forty-six, forty-six, forty-one, or forty-seven percent. Yep, yeah, yeah. This addition, is it, uh, living room, bedrooms, what is it?
Bedrooms.
Bedrooms, yeah.
There is, there is a couple of bedrooms, a bedroom.
Yeah.
And a big rear deck, and then we're expanding a little bit of the kitchen, but we're not touching the kitchen itself. It's just the expansion for the pantry.
Parking stuff there. There's only one spot, and there's no really parking on Pleasant Street, but.
If, if we're allowed to build, we're gonna have to find a way to accommodate the trucking and not being.
I just make that as a comment, it, it's just, uh, just type there, but, okay. Does anyone have anything else? Anyone have anything else? Okay. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on this matter, either here in the audience, or, uh, on Go, is it Google Meet?
As much as my husband.
Oh, okay. Is this your house?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Welcome. Okay, um, no one, uh, step forward, uh, and I don't think you have anything to add, sir? No, okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Shannon, seconded by Paul to close the public hearing, Al?
Yes.
Uh, Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed, what are the wishes of the board?
I think it's very reasonable, um, request, and I would make a motion to approve the application.
Okay, a motion has been made, uh, and I think in the application, they covered some of the criteria. Uh, you know, residential, uh, serves a housing need, and it's more beneficial. Uh, circulation, I did mention that there is just one driveway, but there's no other, uh, adverse effect regarding that. It's a tough street to get out of, as, as you know, my brother-in-law used to live two houses down from you. Uh, so I know that neighborhood there. Uh, there's no additional utilities being added or anything like that. I don't see any environmental impacts, it's very compatible, as Shannon had pointed out, to the neighborhood. And, uh, there are some benefits to the town in regards to, you know, increased tax bill. Okay, so a motion's been made by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shannon, uh, Al?
Yes.
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 Yep, and the motion to approve was, uh, granted, and good luck, and best of luck. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, plot plan, yes, I wrote on it. Okay, um, next up is case twenty-three dash twenty-four, nine Phillips Ave, special permit. Let me get my reading here, uh, that's for Pleasant Street. Public notice. Here somewhere. Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on August first, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. At the request of Lenny Gillis, regarding property located at nine Phillips Avenue in the general zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, two seventy-five Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass., oh two oh six two. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw section five point four point four, nonconforming structure to construct in addition to the existing single-family residence that would create an increase in floor area that exceeds twenty-five percent. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence with the Norwood, excuse me, the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing, make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing C P E D at norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, eight A M to four P M. And again, compliments on the plan, sir. Uh, name and address for the record.
Lenny Gillis, calling home improvement, uh, my home address or work address?
Well, work address is fine, sir.
Two eighty Hillside Avenue, need him.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir.
The homeowner planned to be in here tonight, both homeowners, but, uh, she had a baby, two months early.
Oh, congratulations.
Everyone's two and five.
You better be two months early on the renovation.
She'll be very, she's very happy about that, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
They need space.
Okay, tell us what you're proposing, sir.
I'm proposing to build a, uh, single-story addition on the rear of the home, eighteen by thirty feet. With a little porch off the side for exiting. The, uh, existing first floor was six hundred eighty, six hundred ninety-one square feet, we're adding five hundred and forty square feet. Second floor is six hundred eighty square feet, there's no second floor addition being put on at all. So, that's a thirty-eight point thirty-nine percent larger than the existing home.
Okay.
Home's gonna be used for a, uh, a master bedroom suite on the first floor, and also like a, a little family room.
Okay. And a covered porch, I see?
Covered porch, there, yes.
And it'll be slabbed?
No.
No, it'll be foundation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Concrete piers.
Concrete piers, okay.
For the, uh, porch.
Yeah, and then?
The addition's gonna be.
Foundation for the basement? With the basement?
Yeah, the basement, you know, they, they got a little problem there, I'm not sure, the existing basement is about, got a six-foot ceiling height. This question, if we could dig down lower than that to give them a full basement, they would like a full basement. So, I said, well, we'll look at that when we're actually excavating, but they got a, you know, rubble foundation, so that would require me to probably put some support there. Look, and I'm looking to give them a full ba, full basement, because it's just another foot is all we need.
Right.
All right, but it has a lot to do with the existing foundation that is there, and I probably have to shore it up a little bit. It's gonna add some cost to it, and, you know, there, uh, this question whether there's some ledge right there or not. So, uh, I said, we'll look at that as we're doing it.
Okay.
Because we'll be an additional cost to it.
Yeah.
So, it's not gonna change really anything on the plans, they're just gonna dig a little deeper, everything else stays the same.
Okay. Al?
You mentioned there's some ledge there, and you're trying to go down another foot, are they getting any water in the cellar?
No, zero, zero, there's no, they've never had any. And, uh, their yard is actually a foot or two higher than the yard to the left of them. I don't know why that is, maybe when they dug the thing out, they just filled it up into the backyard. The, uh, underneath their existing porch, do you look underneath there? Because there's, there is an exit, an access door into the basement, which you have to step out of the, up out of the basement to get in, and it's on the plans there. The, uh, to the left of that, as you, as you're outside, there's a big mound of dirt underneath the porch. What's that there for? You know, bugging me, because, you know, when they dug the foundation, put it in, it had, it had to be out of the way. How are they gonna get in there and work? So, I don't know what's there, and, you know, one of the things I try to do is, is point out anything that could be a surprise for a client, because, you know, they wanna know how much it's gonna cost. I, I really go to great lengths to, to pull out any surprises and warnings, we're gonna get one, looks like it could be right here. So, they're, they're well aware that could happen, and that would have something to do, if I was to give them a, a larger basement.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, but it could stay there, it's not a problem, just they're gonna lose part of the basement. You know, I'm not gonna be pulling on any dynamite here, and we're not gonna put a dental hammer there either. You know, because that's, that would add too much cost.
The reason why I ask that question is because when I did a renovation in the condition, I had been getting water occasionally in the basement of the existing. It's about a foot deeper into the addition, the foundation is.
Yeah.
I haven't had water in the basement since.
The, uh, I specifically asked about that, and asked about the neighborhood, all right, the neighbors, they said, no, nothing at all. The, uh, you know, I, like I said, I try to break things up, I told them, when I go a foot deeper, you know, if, if I may hit water, and if I did, you know, there's problems they were doing it. You know, but, uh, if I hit water when I'm digging a foundation, I just throw a sump pump in, you get rid of it, put my foot in it, and I'm building again. That's, that's never been a problem.
Thank you.
You know, but a good point, and I, and I bring that up to them, and I didn't put anything in the plans on it, because we're not expecting it. But I like to really explain to clients is what happens when they're digging, because that's really where the first surprises come from, excavation.
Anything else, Al?
Okay, that's good.
Rachel?
I'm right now, thank you.
Okay. Shannon? Paul?
No questions.
Okay. We do have a letter from the Building Inspector, dated July eighteenth. Expansion of, for nine, re, nine Phillips Avenue, expansion of pre-existing nonconform, single-family home beyond twenty-five percent per five point four. The expansion will require a special permit from the Z B A in G District. The addition meets all the required setbacks for the district, so the addition will not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure or create any additional nonconformity. A special permit is supported by this office, no other comments or feedback, signed Gary Palatia, C C Sarah Dixon, and Norwood Town Council. Thank you, sir. Um, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Yes, please, uh, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
It's just the two of us.
Okay, you can sit there if you're more comfortable, just state your name and address, that's fine.
We're Ed and Beth Lynch, and we've lived at thirteen Phillips Avenue, the exact house next door to them
Yeah.
for the last forty-three years, thirty-five years almost.
Yeah.
Um, there is water that gets into our basement, that runoff area between their, between their yards, as you can see the dip.
So, you.
Yes, sir, 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 sir.
As you stand out, we live next door.
Okay.
To the left.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Um, what we'll do is, they'll state all their concerns, and then I'll ask you to address the board, okay? So, just, if you would just, that's fine, if you just listen, okay, so that's a concern, please take notes, and go ahead, what else?
Well, our concern is that he doesn't understand that there is a ledge, our cellar is five feet high. You cannot stand up in it, it is the cellar. If you stand up, when I have my, when I have the furnace cleaned, we have to warn everybody, we have the same type of doorway to get into. You have to go up and over, we've had work done on it and had them build a door, the door keeps cracking. Because the house is settling, the house, those two houses are over a hundred and twenty-five years old each. Because the woman who lived in that house when we first moved in, her father and her grandfather built those houses and three more on the street. Um, you can look them up, the family name was Clancy, they were built by families who moved into this town a hundred and, two hundred years ago. They, we're gonna run into problems, the backyard, we're gonna be building, we have nothing, we think this is wonderful, because we know that. But we don't know them close enough for them to have come to ask us about water. Jim used to get water in the basement before the man who bought the house from him fixed it over. Not a lot, but we didn't get a lot of water in the basement in our cellar, um, until they did the plumbing work up and down all the streets, uh, ten, fifteen years ago. And now we have a dip that comes into our cellar now. So, I, my concern is that if you start digging, we're gonna be in problems.
Okay, anything else, ma'am? Anything else?
What else would the, I can't think, the ledge probably runs all the way through the, because when we were, Jim used to put a garden in, we're gonna be digging, and everything. He used to dig up rocks all the time, pottery, all sorts of stuff, every year.
Okay.
So, just to warn you, I'm more concerned that, you know, when you're doing it, you're probably not gonna be able to dig too deep.
Okay, yeah, hold on. Thank you, thank you, is there anyone else to speak on this matter? Okay, um, well, I think you commented, you don't know what's there when you start digging, you've been warned, there might be ledge. Uh, the runoff from the roof, you gonna tie that into French drains?
Wasn't planted on it.
Well, might be something you would consider, because these, uh, the lynchers have brought up the fact that there's water that's running off because of the topography onto their property, and it might be helpful, um, for the roof runoff water, where, where it's gonna go, if it can go into some type of French drain, but that's just a comment. I'll, go ahead, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, absolutely.
Can I, can I address it?
Yeah, go ahead, just, just.
First, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
All right, that's first off, thank you very much.
Well, we didn't know we had a neighbor either.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
We, we don't see them because of their schedules and all.
I could show you picture, the whole family. The, uh, you said you have a dip after the dump.
Have you been to the house?
Yeah, well, I know that, uh, the property, their property's higher than yours.
Yes.
I looked at it, I said, why'd they do that? Why, how did that happen?
It occurred, it got worse when they were doing the work to renovate the house on the.
When they, when they living in?
The, the house they're living in used to have a side, if you've seen our house, we have a side door.
Yeah.
They used to have a side door, and they took the door, and it was, and it opened up into a pantry. And the man who renovated the house when they bought it, put that window in that's there, so they only have a front door now. And then a porch there and a small stepping porch.
So, they're, they're back, Gary?
Okay, Mr. Gillis, I, I think the issue's the ledge, and I think you know, you cited that you're gonna run into the ledge. Their other issue is the water, please tell us how you're gonna address the water issues that possibly might affect their property.
Well, the runoff from the roof, the only thing to do is to collect the water and put it into a, a drain.
Okay, a French drain?
The, uh, not a French, French drain is like we can put it in the basement, is that what you're talking about?
Well, just some type of, uh, you know, how are we going to make sure that there's no additional runoff? Because you're gonna have another roof, so you're gonna have more water running off the roof, so their concern is the water.
Put it into a drywall.
Okay.
You know, right there on the property.
Okay, all righty.
Collect it from there.
Okay. Um, all right, Paul, you wanted to say something?
No, I mean, they don't oppose it, I, I think it's wonderful that they're here, so that you can
Welcome to come and take a look at that.
You can receive the constructive feedback, but I think, um, I think he'll, he knows now that the drainage isn't, could be an issue. And he wants his clients happy as well.
Yeah.
That's all I guess.
Thank you, Paul.
We're gonna collect the water, can I talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, we can talk to you afterwards.
Yeah, well, just, just tell us, address the board, how you're gonna, how you're gonna address the water issue.
I'm gonna collect the water from the gutters that are coming off the new addition, all right, and direct it in to a drywall, all right? Do you understand what a drywall is?
More or less, yeah.
Okay.
The old and new.
It's gonna stay on the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stays on the property, the drywall is below ground.
Okay, that's fine, thank you, sir. Al? Okay, Rachel? Shannon?
No.
Okay, um, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Shannon, seconded by Paul, Paul to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed, uh, what is the wishes of the board? I think we just touch upon, um, uh, the economic needs, ob, obviously, the social needs of the local residents, we have a new baby of, to Norwood, which is great. Um, I, when I went by there, I, I don't see any circulation issues, uh, I know the Reeds live on Phillips, uh.
They put a big room, which I assume it's gonna look like something like that.
Dropped my kids off there over the years many, many times, and Timmy coached.
My kids went to school.
Yeah. And, um, there's no utilities added, the environmental impact that we heard about was water, and the applicant has agreed to put in a drywall that will catch the new water runoff from the new addition, it is very compatible to the neighborhood, as you go down that street, as, as you pointed out, the Reeds have done a lot of work in their house, it, and it fits with the neighborhood, and obviously, there's a a benefit for the town financially with the increased, uh, revenue, so I think we met the criteria.